Hello, I'd like to call to order the Elizabethan City Schools March Board of Education Meeting. We've got lots of special guests. We want to welcome our state champions, Lady Cyclones. We have a representative. Well, absolutely. We also have a representative from our award-winning cheerleading squad. Thank you. Also want to welcome coaches and their families. Also, we'd like to welcome from GRC, Mr. Kane and Mr. Edmondson. We're very happy to have gentlemen here tonight. If everyone would please stand and Mr. Alexander will lead us to the pledge in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask you to think of the Pless and Barker families due to the loss of Marilyn Pless, who was a longtime educator and friend of ours this past weekend.
Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge is to do what in the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to be having several, we're going to do several recognitions tonight. So what I would ask is, we just kind of will wait until we go through all of them and then I promise I'll give you all a signal. You're more than welcome to stay, but I don't expect you to. So if you'll just let us do all the recognitions and I'll kind of, we'll stop everything for a little while and let you guys scoot out. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Alexander.
At this time, Mr. Wilson will come forward for the wireless mic here and he's going to introduce Coach Duggar, who will introduce his players or talk about them and coaches. And we're just real excited. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson over here.
It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight and if I could very quickly, Elizabethan is so special to me because I came here in 1985 and it was the first head coaching position I had at the high school level. And I'll never forget that. And every year I would go to the state basketball tournament and just watch these incredible teams play. And I just remember sitting in the stands watching this thinking, I wish one time I could have a team that could play in the state tournament. Well, eventually we did. But now to have a team that has won the state tournament is just, it's unbelievable. And I don't want to talk too much because Coach Duggar does a much better job at this than I do. But what they did is, it means so much to every kid that's ever played here and every coach that's set up in those stands and watched state tournaments and dreamed about it. And it was a thrill for me just to get there and then to go down and watch these girls win. It was unbelievable. So Coach Duggar, if you'd come forward.
You were doing real well.
It'll pick up well if you do that, if you'll talk into the microphone, Coach. I know you don't want to.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Alexander and the board, all of you members of the board for having us tonight and for honoring these players and our coaches for a job well done and also for a lot of hard work, a lot of commitment that has taken place throughout the course of the year. I've said two or three different, on two or three different occasions, I've said, Mr. Alexander, thank you. I've said to his staff, thank you. Mr. Wright, thank you. To your staff, thank you. And, you know, I happened to look back and see Mr. Hutchins back there and it's hard to believe that he was the first post player that I ever coached at Elizabethan High School. And a very good one at that.
Coach, you have an agent to that.
He started me off on the right foot. I'll never forget that night at Kingsport, making those free throws. Coach Van Hust wasn't very happy when we left out of there that night. But again, thank you to a lot of people. Thank you to Coach Wilson for his support and putting up his aggravation a little bit sometimes also. But that's Coach Wilson. No, I've just said that in a joking way. Coach Wilson's a very dear friend. We've been around sometime. And when he was talking about, you know, wanting to have a team to play in a state tournament, I can remember back when he was trying to get the program off the ground and trying to get it headed in the right direction. And he had to endure some things. I don't know, I don't know if I could endure it or not. And, but he did a heck of a job and got, got the program headed in the right direction. And it's been going, you know, in the right direction for quite some time now. And I think when you talk about our Lady Cyclone basketball program, Coach Wilson, you know, was the front runner there that had to endure a lot of hard times. And, you know, he fought a lot of battles. It wasn't just with his team or things like that. It was, it was a transition for girls' basketball in the area. And I was on the other side. And, you know, he and I had a lot of conversations and, you know, we've spent, we've eaten a lot of meals together. But Coach Wilson, thank you for everything. I appreciate you. You know, I've said this on a couple of different occasions, Mr. Wright and his staff at the high school has been just so tremendous this year with supporting all of our student athletes and all of our students. But I couldn't believe, you know, driving to some of the gyms that we went to play and I turn around and look and there's Mr. Wright or, or there's Ms. Addington or Mr. Hopson, you know, just all of you there just supporting the kids and supporting all of us. And, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate that. That was very special. And our cheerleaders, you know, they've just done an outstanding job all year long. Ms. Duggar, thank you for all your support and I really appreciate you and your cheerleaders. You know, when we started the season, I thought, you know, we've got some areas of concern. I don't want, I didn't want to use the word weaknesses, but I felt like we had some areas of concern. And, you know, I really felt like that this team could be special if some of these parts came together. And believe it or not, our goal all along was to play in Murfreesboro and to play there in March. And, you know, this is just a very, very special and unique group of young ladies. And I've been around, I've been around some teams that have been very bonded, worked extremely hard, had a lot of high character on them. But this group has just maxed out. I mean, they, I've never been with a group that put everybody else on the team in front of themselves like this group has done. They have, they have been the epitome, every one of them, of a first-class teammate. And they have been there for one another throughout the entire season. And there's been some ups and downs. We've had some injuries, so on and so forth. But I just can't say enough about the character and the class, the work ethic, the commitment and dedication, not only to, for themselves, but for one another. It's just been tremendous. And, you know, I just, I just feel like this group, from the beginning, back in November, they felt like, hey, we're, you know, we're going, we're going to be a good team and we're going to play in Murfreesboro. And, you know, I've had one or two of them say, hey, we're going to win that thing, you know, throughout the course of the year. And, you know, I want to be positive with them and say, yeah, we can do it. But it's been a long road, a long journey. It's been a process. But it's been done with an outstanding group of young ladies or players that I have, I feel so dearly blessed to have the opportunity to work with. And they have just been tremendous all throughout the season. I told somebody the other day, one of the sportswriters, I said, you know, you come and talk to us, you know, after a game about who did this or who did that. And I said, but, you know, really the fun times is, you know, is on the bus rides and listening to them sing and listen to some of their music. I don't know what it said, but, you know, I listened anyway. Of course, Melinda's the DJ, I think. But, you know, and hearing some of the pick at me type one-liners in the locker room and on the practice floor and things like that. It's just, it's just been very special. And, you know, to go 33 and 3 and to accomplish what they have accomplished. I don't know personally if it's really sunk in yet. I just feel like whenever we're getting ready for another game, you know, right now. But what they have done, I really appreciate. But they have had a lot of support from family, you know, the parents. Appreciate you, all of you. You're very special. Some of you have had some daughters and so on and so forth that, you know, that I have coached and worked with. It's been tremendous. But it's just, it's collective, it's a collective, you know, piece of work. And we, you know, everyone, I mean, you look at the job that Mr. Hunt has done. I'll just bring his name out there. And you just think about a lot of other people that have had a part and a hand in these young ladies and in our program and have been supportive. We've got some of the greatest fans in the state of Tennessee that are very supportive. And, you know, they'll fight for these kids. It's unbelievable. But, you know, I cannot say enough about what they have meant and how they have represented our school, our community, Carter County, East Tennessee for that matter. And it's just been tremendous. But thank you, young ladies, for what you've accomplished. And I really appreciate you. And I know that everybody around is very proud of you. And like we've said on numerous occasions, what these, this team has done, we've done it for a lot of people. It's not just us. We want to share this with a lot of people and with me personally. It's for every player that I've ever been associated with, boy or girl. And it's because every kid that I've ever worked with has been very dear and very special. And I really appreciate everything that every kid has committed to our basketball program. Okay, I'll be quiet. I'm going to introduce some people. And we do have some people still in softball. And Sarah made it back, right? And Sarah Robson, yeah. And Emily Schubert is not here. She has a health issue with, I think a sister's having surgery in the morning and they wanted to do something together as a family, which is, which is fine. I see another one coming in back here. I've really tried to talk and stall.
Let me see if there's any of us after.
See Mr. and Mrs. Bradley, but I don't see their daughter. They're looking for her also. Any of you ladies got anything you want to say? Melinda, I know you're dying. Did y'all have a JV game? Is that Caitlin and, and they're there? Okay. Okay, I'm just going to start out real quickly here. Where do you want us to line up at?
Just behind the trophy.
Behind the trophy. Okay. First person I want to call out here is Ashley Depew. Autumn Lyon, Lauren Campbell, Brittany Campbell, Linda Espino, Allison Williams, Haley Burleson. And I'll start with the back row. I have to look a little closer here. Kelsey Marisats. I'm getting better. Kayla Marisats, Emily Kaiser, Sarah Robison, Melinda Perry, Kyra McCrery, Megan Petrowski, and our lone senior, Sarah Bradley, who I am very proud of. Not that I'm not proud of all of them, but especially she's been the glue that is, that last month that really bonded us together, along with the help of her teammates. Am I leaving out anyone other than Emily Schubert, Caitlin Gardner, Bailey Montgomery? Okay, next, I want to introduce you to two gentlemen that whatever these, these girls have accomplished, they've had a big hand in. And not only are they tremendous coaches, but they're very dear and sincere friends of mine. And Coach Hyder and I have, we've been working at this for a few years now. And I can't say enough about Coach Hyder, what he does, his expertise as a coach, and what he does with kids, players trying to get them better as individuals and just recognizing certain areas of the game that I don't maybe put as much emphasis on. But he does a tremendous job. We're very blessed and thankful to have him. And we hope that we keep him. So Coach Hyder, come on up. The next young man, this is his first year with us. I don't, I don't know what he thinks about us yet. He's been on a, he's probably sat back and took notes and observed and, but he's been a tremendous help this year. And he's done a tremendous job with our JV. Our JV won the, I guess you could say, our league JV tournament at Sullivan East at the end of the season. And, you know, we've thrown him out there some days just, you know, swim or, or whatever. And he's done a tremendous job. And I really appreciate all he's done helping out with the JV team, the freshman group, and also our forestry group. That's Mr. Russ Lyon. Come on up, sir. You know, I mentioned the other day about a lot of people having a hand in this and a lot of help, a lot of support. And, you know, our coaching staff, our board's coaching staff is just tremendous. I've said on several times that Coach Honeycutt, Coach Van Hust, Coach Pless and Coach Emmert are just tremendous to work with. And, you know, I sincerely feel for their kids and what they're trying to get done there. And I feel like they do the same with us. And that's very special because a lot of places that doesn't always happen that way. Mr. Alexander, a special thank you to you. Mr. Pless and Coach Wilson, very special to you, you three gentlemen. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. And this is for everyone. This is your 2013-14 state champions.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you're, as they're forming up, Coach, come over here for the picture. If you look to your left, you'll see that this is not the first trip for many of these girls. If you'll notice those 20 by 30s over there. Coach, come in this way so we can get the picture here. We have to have a front line there, I believe.
Coach Wilson?
Look how he acts like he doesn't understand you.
He knows jumping. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I apologize for my girls not being here. It's been a very long season. Our season starts the minute tryouts occur. And they practice all summer long, just like you all do. And they practice all summer long, just like you all do. And they do camp and they have football season, which runs into basketball. And they are also involved in working at the present time, and dance, and track, and softball, and, what's the other one? And tennis match going on tonight. So I apologize for my girls not being here, but it has been a great season. They've accomplished a lot this year. It started out in, at Appy State this summer when they were the champion champs at cheerleading camp. So I'm very proud of them for that also. It was a great trip to Murfreesboro to, to wind up a wonderful year, especially for my seniors. The award that we received down there, I didn't know that there was an award, actually. And Coach Wilson wanted me to explain a little bit. So I hope Mr. Wondell doesn't mind because I told him I would be worried. But the award that they did achieve was one that is typically given as a consolation prize to the, to the cheerleaders who their team does not win. So it's like, oh, here's your take home prize because you all lost state. And so, so the gentleman that was beside of us who worked for special events for MTSU, he said, ma'am, he said, your cheerleaders will not be eligible for that trophy, the plaque, the award. And I said, excuse me? He said, that's given to, to the cheerleaders whose team loses. And so when we won, I was really shocked. And he said, trust me, I've been doing this many, many years and I have never seen that happen before, that your girls have actually gotten a trophy for something that they don't give it to. It's always for the other team. And he said, so you should be very proud of, of your girls and, and their character. So I am very proud of them and what they achieved. And of course, he made me talk to a police officer and say, tell her the truth, I have never seen this happen before. We have wonderful girls, we have wonderful students at Elizabethan High School and in Elizabethan City Schools. I'm very proud to work for this system. I've always said that. It was a pleasure taking these girls because they're wonderful girls. You have a wonderful child. I will say that I have a board member that I have his daughter and she's a wonderful girl also, and she can be your Chelsea. So thank you for your support, board members, as well as Mr. Alexander. I want to thank Mr. Culbert for driving. And my right, left hand and anything else that I do at Elizabethan High School goes to Mr. Wright and Coach Wilson. He does everything for us. He does so much at that high school that people don't realize. He made that trip happen. He made it happen. So he was a great part of us going to, going to Murfreesboro, making sure that we had transportation, making sure we had the rooms, making sure we had the money. So I really want to thank him for all that he does on a daily basis. And thank you again for your support, parents and faculty at the high school. Thank you so much. I'm not there every day, but thank you for everything you do. Thank you. And thank you, Jayla Sturridge.
Mr. Wilson, can you come over and stand for this picture? Mr. Wilson, come on over and stand in this picture, please. Folks, if, if you ever want to get struck down, please make a comment that cheerleaders are not athletes. And then you'll find out real fast that they are, in fact, excellent athletes.
Dr. G, you need the microphone.
Dr. G. Dr. G.
Microphone.
Well, this is a wonderful group. Let me come over here and get my notes. I'll tell you a little bit about this group. They're a very special group. Not, not all of them could be here tonight. Mr. Elliott's not here. Ms. Howard's not here. And Ms. Burtfield's not here this evening. But collectively, this group has made an amazing transformation, both at the middle and high school in Elizabethan, over the last four years. They've been a part of our Race to the Top grant program that we've done. The group is pretty special. They have 249 years of teaching experience.
You heard that, Mr. Greenly?
So you think that, they've all retired from a Carter County high school, middle school, but we claim them all as ours. They've made an immeasurable contribution to students over the years. I tallied up a close figure on the amount of students that they have taught over the years, and that figure would be 28,560 students in their career. The program that they've come through is our CAP program. And it was started by Mr. Eddie Place six or seven years ago as a way to help us prevent dropouts in our high school. And one thing we know about dropouts and what happens with that is that they, their children will have a 40% less likely chance of graduating high school themselves. Goes from 78 to 38%. During their time, they have graduated 85 students who probably would have dropped out otherwise. And that's made a big economic impact on our area. The economic impact for someone at entry level job, they'll make almost $290,000 less than someone that graduates high school. So the academic impact and impact on their families is $23 million. If you go through a cycle with their children, if they attend high school and they graduate, it'll be a $100 million impact on those families. So it's very significant. Our middle school program was Mrs. Greenley and Ms. Semerly. They really taught basic reading skills to some students that needed that. Over that time, we had many students make a one grade level jump. We had 23.5% of them made a two grade level jump in reading. They grew, their program grew students twice as fast as all the other students in our program. They grew 25% of them from basic to proficient on our state assessment. I want to thank our board. I want to thank Mr. Alexander and every central office staff member that we have that have been a part of our Race to the Top. And also our teachers who do a great job graduating all the other students every day. So I want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the work that you've done. It's a tremendous accomplishment and we appreciate you. Make sure you know, this is Mrs. Burns here on the end, this Nancy Greenley, Sandy Semerly, Mr. Larry Heaton, and Mr. Jim Greenly. So we'll get a picture of you.
To the previous group, Mr. Wilson wanted me to mention that five of our girls on the basketball team are carrying a 4.0 average, and that's impressive.
All right. Thank you, guys. If you need to leave, we'll give you a few minutes. You are, of course, welcome to stay, but I'm sure have a good evening is in order. We'll give everybody a couple of minutes for them to, to be on their way. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Thanks for coming.
Lynn Douglas is the best loved man in town.
He is.
He and Mr. Elliott. Between Mr. Elliott and him, they're about ties right now.
Did you think about, I thought about how Sandy is and Mr. Elliott, of course, you can't be beat. But I tell you, we're really fortunate.
He and Elliott work well, so Chris and Perry are so good together.
Yeah. Yeah, he is great, too.
They always give each other tutips. They never take primary credit. They're always a team.
No, 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 no. We're fortunate.
We are fortunate.
All right, we will continue with our meeting. It is time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Hearing none, or seeing no one, or either, we'll move on. It's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. If you'll notice, we have some changes. There is a change, a correction to the consent and a correction to the regular agenda. So please notice that. So can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the agenda, both of them? And of course, again, notice that we do have the corrections.
Okay, I have on, hm, the minutes of January, January 16, where I could not hear very well at that meeting and we didn't really get the meat of what I was trying to say into the minutes. And if you just put on there to reference, yeah.
Yeah, she, below that, I believe that is the corrected minutes. So below that was where Mrs. Perkins included what we wanted changed, so.
Right, she, yeah, she's, very good, very good. But anyway, there is a verb issues, but you'll find it when you read it. Is should be are, A-R-E, it's okay. But if you reference February 14th minutes, it's better explained up there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none? Time, most on the floor is to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, let's see, Mr. Alexander?
Prior to the personnel update, I would like to say, first of all, today was a red letter day in that Mrs. Wilson went down and talked with Ms. Kessler and received a $5 million check. And, and we're just so appreciative to have that. And we're beginning. They even made a picture of that, as did the supervisors, made the picture with the check. Also, I'd like to say that Mrs. Brewer and I attended board meetings at Carter County and Washington County after having gone last month to Unicor and thanked them for their assistance in the vandalism endeavor. And they were so kind and we appreciate, I appreciate the chair's time and taking, going a distance for that. I ask you also, prior to your leaving, that if you'll check out the bronze plaque, which will be going on the TA Duggar Tower, the concession stand, bathroom, announcing tower. And you'll see that's, that'll be going up for our ribbon cutting, which will be announced as quickly as we get back from the spring break. Also, on April, on or about April 6th, in Elizabethan Star will be a full page color picture for the progress report. And please check that out. In that, there of course is, would be the two champions, the state championships in the band and the girls' basketball, the cheerleaders, the teachers of the year, two shots of the TA Duggar fields and one shot of the championship football team. So I look forward to seeing that and I hope you will, too. That will be in color and it is a full page. So also, as we look into the personnel update, here we have new hires, Linda Hampton, EHS Part-Time Cook, effective 310. Teter Belissa, EHS Assistant Softball Coach, effective 311. Also, on the next page, we have Curtis Brummett, Volunteer Assistant Tennis Coach at EHS, effective 314. EB LeFollet, EHS Assistant Softball Coach, effective 319. Next, resignations. Jennifer Nye, TA Duggar Teacher Assistant, effective 227. Judith Cheek, Interim TA Duggar Teacher, effective 228. Ryan Whitten, TA Duggar Assistant Baseball Coach, effective 34. Chelsea Wood, ESP Childcare Worker, effective 314. Leave of absence, Richie Burra, Maintenance Worker, 227 to 37. Also, on the next page, Jenny Wetzel, Herr McQuomick Assistant to the Teacher, from 3, 5 to 317. Denise Davis, Westside Teacher, from 401 to 515. Next, leave of absence, I'm sorry, that's redundant. Transfer Jessica Green, Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, from EHS to TA Duggar, effective And suspension without pay, Annette Harris, Herr McQuomick Special Education Teacher, from 35 to, to 37. Substitute teacher, Melissa Jones, effective 227. To, and we all have one other resignation, and that is Sarah Snively, TA Duggar Cheerleading Sponsor, effective 31. Did I leave one out?
No, that was the one I was afraid you were going to leave out. So we got it. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Next is reports by board members or any administrative staff. Several of us went to the TSBA workshop a week or so ago. Anybody want to report on that?
I'll give a brief overview. It was very informative. And of course, we participated and filled out sheets. And it discussed our vision, that the board was to have a vision. We were to follow up on it, make sure that we were working with our vision. Our budget would also show or reflect a vision that we have for our school system. So we showed that everything was a part of that. And I think there was only one of us that didn't attend, so I bought my book so he could see it, if you pass them down.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think you will enjoy, it rates, rated the, the very school scores was in there. The amount this paid per student, our scores, how they reflected with the other system scores. So I thoroughly enjoyed that. Thank you for allowing us to go.
Now, I just pulled out a couple of three things that really I agreed with, of course. Tammy is real good, very lively. She said, and I agree with this, expect more and you achieve more. And that's true even with children in the classroom. And the academics that are required should be raised. And of course, again, I may hate to keep repeating the governor, but I think some of his plans within exchange, we're going to have to do something in the next few years. And I think by extending the curriculums and extending the education will be one answer. She said there will be changes and there've been great changes made just in the last five or six years, I suppose. So anyway, and we talked about visionaries and mentioned some of those. And we've had great people in, in that area, in the vision area.
Somebody else? I want to do a couple of things. I want to say a big well done to TA Duggar. The night that our ladies captured the state championship, TA Duggar hosted a Jammin' for Josh. And let me tell you, anything that is being done to raise awareness for ALS, you need to come because quality of entertainment was off the chart. Christmas Eastside, I was in charge of a, of a musical performance. It was unbelievable at TA Duggar. It was amazing. Mr. Little and his band performed. We had other people from our system that performed, and my husband and I were just sitting there going, this is like a date, say, you know, Saturday night, and we're listening to some really great music. It was wonderful. Also, to TA Duggar, if you have not been to the auditorium to see the new auditorium curtains, I stopped in my tracks. I walked in, and they are amazing. I, to be really honest, I kind of forgot about them, which I'm surprised I did, but I apologize, I forgot about them. And I walked in, and if you haven't been there, they're black. There's orange embroidery with the TA Duggar crest on it. That auditorium was like when a girl gets a new outfit, you know, we kind of stand a little, little bit higher. That auditorium was looking good. It was beautiful. So, great job on that. And also, I think it was Friday, my daughter and I walked over to TA Duggar and watched, there was a softball game going on. There was a void's baseball game going on. It got a little chilly, but it was fantastic. It was so exciting. There were so many people. You could, you kind of sit in the middle and just kind of go back and forth and watch both. So, great job, GRC, on that. And congratulations, TA Duggar, on that. That was so exciting. This has been such a good meeting. I'm just so, you know, it's great so far. But I wanted to say how exciting that was, so make your way up to TA Duggar and catch a game.
You know, I did that. You did that very thing. And what are all those orange, oh, well, I guess it's on the baseball field, because I was watching softball.
The sponsors, the sponsor banners?
I couldn't figure it out, and I asked my husband, and he said, I didn't even see them, and so.
I guess it's like sponsor banners that they have at the high school. I guess, I mean, when they have different businesses and organizations will purchase the banners, so fundraiser and, you'll see them in almost all sports fields, but it's a nice thing for our public people to, you know, support our, our teams. But you'll see at the football field, you'll see them, if you've ever noticed, if you look up on the wall at both TA Duggar and the basketball field, and the gyms, and high school and TA Duggar, they're there, and.
I had trouble seeing the scoreboard. The sun was exactly in the right place, and this man said, over there's the scoreboard, and I'm going, where? And it wasn't lit. Does it light up? Does the scoreboard light up?
It's not quite ready. It's had, it's had an issue, so they're having it worked on. It'll be up and running soon.
Does it, do they have electricity going into that field, or is that why the lights would be so expensive? I'd like to see that field lit.
It'd be nice, it'd be very nice. Well, that'll, that's a, probably a topic for another day, since this was just something we were just talking about, so.
Yeah, we do need to talk about that.
Well, we will do that. But for now, let's move on with the agenda, cause it's been a fun night, so let's see if we can keep up the good work. First item is to approve contract with CRS Advanced Technology for Sub Finder, beginning July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for an annual cost of $7,015. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe this is Mr. Van Hust, if anyone has any questions.
No, Dr. Gardiner is going to speak to this one. But folks, the principals here will attest that this will be a God sin to them in locating subs. So, under those circumstances, take it away, Dr. Gardiner.
This, this will provide two functions for us. First of all, as you know, with the new Obamacare mandate, when you have part-time, kind of at-will employees that are coming onboard on a daily basis, they work on a day, day-by-day basis. So, this is going to give us the ability to track those employees and give us the ability to say, we can set their time during, in the system during the week at less than 30 hours, to keep us out of having to pay benefits for those employees. And also, the other part of it is just, we're paying a lot of comp time and hours to secretaries slash bookkeepers who are up sometimes, you know, receiving phone calls at 2 o'clock in the morning about whether someone's going to accept the substituting job. This, this will allow the substitute to go online, accept the job. We'll have a printout in the morning of how many people we're going to have out for the day. The teachers also go in and make the request to be out for that day, so helps us with time tracking for our employees and also filling those jobs. So when the principal walks in, they'll have an email that will say, here are the people you have out, and here are the jobs that have been picked up so far for the day, and it'll help us just better manage what we're doing with that. So we appreciate your consideration of this. It'll help us in several areas.
Is this just for teachers, or is this for custodians and, you know, kitchen helping folks, or is it just mainly for the teachers?
We, we sat down and went through a process. All of our certified staff will be on there. We also looked at some high-need employees. Let's say that we had a special education teaching assistant. That was an all-day assistant with, with a child, where we knew that they, they may be medically fragile. We tried to include a few of those people in there as well, to make sure that we were able to get subs. For some physicians, we'll not need a sub. So we tried not to include them in this figure, because, of course, we're paying for something we won't use, so.
I saw this is a one-year annual cost. Is this something to renew each year?
The renewal, the, the first year is a little bit more. There's an onboarding, we were waived part of the onboarding fee, but there is an onboarding fee to make sure we get all of our data entered and, and those types of things. Then it's renewable at a lower cost in coming years. I believe the initial year is about $7,000, what was it, seven?
$7,015.
Yeah, it's a $2,500 sub fee, and then the next year, when you come back on it, it's somewhere around about $4,100, I'd say, in consecutive years. So, it'll be, it'll be less expensive as we go.
And may I say that, that $7,000 is a lot of money to most everyone, but the point of it is, it's nothing as compared to the heartache it's created at the school level. Trying to find these people and people calling back, that, you know, not knowing who's out and things of this nature, having done that before, it's, it's, you're trying to get your clothes on, and you have a call after call after call, and things of this nature, until you're about ready to take your shoestring's away, if you know what I mean.
Thank you.
It's kind of one of those things you look out there at the administrators, they're all, it's kind of like, please. Any more questions or comments on this? Item on the floor is to approve contract with CRS Advanced Technology for Sub Finder, beginning July 1, 2014 through July 30, 2015, for an annual cost of $7,015. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Next, and go over to where the corrected copy is for this one. So approve selection of GRC as the construction manager for the new athletic complex and band and music classroom addition at Elizabethan High School for a cost of $398,340. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And this is when Mr. Van Hest comes forward.
The, the document I just handed you is what necessitated an addendum to the agenda. The, on the cover sheet, if you noticed, what's in, in your board packet, it, for some reason, excluded the band and music classroom. That was, that was inadvertent omission, and so we just wanted to correct that, so there wouldn't be any questions. So that's the reason, and that's the document you have here. That will be the cover letter. Just to briefly discuss the process that we went through to, how we reached the recommendation we've brought to you at this point. I think in your board information, I think in the information section, you should have a section that's titled Summary of Statutory Requirements for Construction Management Services. It's a two-page document. One is a, obviously, the first is a summary, and then the second page is the actual statute itself. And there's a couple of things I wanted to point out on this. The first one is, it says, "Construction management services may be, must be procured for each project through written requests for proposals, a proposal process listed by advertisement in a newspaper of general circulation in the county." So basically, what this is saying is, this perfect, this is a professional service, and you are required to put this out for bid, and we did that. In December, on December the 20th, ah, excuse me, November the 20th, it was listed in the Elizabethan Star and the Johnson City Press. And on December the 4th, we received five proposals back at that point in time. At that point, administrative team, along with some guidance with, from Mr. Weems, we took those five, evaluated those, and whittled that down to three. And what I'll, what I'd start to, start by saying is, all five companies are extremely reputable, would, would all do an amazing job. But we whittled down to three, and two of them that we eliminated were not from the local area. So we basically whittled down every, anyone that wasn't from the tristities, which left us with three. We just felt like the scope of this project, it was important to have someone, and one that was readily available, and that, obviously, we had a relationship with. So we whittled that down to three, and then on December the 9th, we invited each one of those back here to the central office, and they did a presentation on the three proposals, on each of their proposals. And from that, our group met again and came up with the recommendation that you see before you. If you look, there's a page there, there's a comparison of those three companies and the fees. One thing I did want to point out on this summary sheet is there's, it's very detailed in exactly what should be involved in the process to determine a construction manager. And if you notice there on number three, it says, "Written requests for proposals process will indicate the service requirements and the factors used for evaluating the proposals, and the factors shall include: construction managers qualifications and experience on similar projects, qualifications of personnel to be assigned to the project, fees and costs, and any additional factors deemed relevant by the district." And one thing that the statute points out is that cost is not to be the sole criterion for evaluation. Okay? So, so based on that, we took all of these factors into account, and our recommendation to you is the selection of GRC. Now, there are several reasons for that. We have personal knowledge of all three that were, that were what I would call finalists, if you would. GRC, as you mentioned, recently completed a project for us, a field project at TA Duggar, the baseball and softball fields. They were excellent to work with, a very good working relationship there. They also, when you look at their experience, they were involved in the construction of the stadium at Johnson City. They're also involved right now with the reworking of the stadium at Dobbin's Bennett, the football stadium. So they have a lot of experience on stadium construction, and when you, when you look in the area, they're probably, you know, the company that has the most experience on that. Plus, we have, again, the personal relationship with them. Also, they constructed several projects in the area, Kingsport, they built a band room in Kingsport, other classrooms, central office, board of education building, remodeled the pool area there. So we feel very comfortable with their qualifications. And we feel like this is a company we can work closely with, again, because we already have established relationship with them, just recently, just a few months ago. And we feel like that this is critical, this position is critical, to ensure that these projects that the city and the community have invested money in, that we think this is a critical component to make sure that they're done right, and that when it's over, it's going to be projects, you know, completed that people are extremely proud of. So, no, they're not the cheapest, you know, but I think, again, any of these would be great, you know, but again, when you look at all those criteria listed, to us, you know, it was, it was pretty obvious who we would recommend to you. So, that's just kind of a brief overview of, of where we are. Mr. Kane and Mr. Edmiston are here from GRC, and Mr. Kane is available if you have some general questions about construction management overall, or any particular questions for me.
Was that, did you use a construction manager at TA Duggar Fields, or you just used the GRC people?
No, on that project, we just essentially put the project out for bid. GRC was the low bidder, and then the board selected them to do the project. The construction manager, the benefit to this is, since we're talking about two projects, we're talking about an athletic stadium and a band room classroom and renovation, the construction manager oversees both of those projects, because there's a finite amount of funding available. And so having a construction manager, they're working with both of those, they understand the dollars, and they're able to keep everything within budget. The other real benefit is, they're involved on the front end, where typically, they're not involved until it's time to bid. They're involved on the front end with the architects, and so that there's no surprises on bid day. You know, they're, they have a lot of experience in, obviously, recently, in the price estimates for all these components involved. So they have firsthand knowledge for that. So we're, we're also paying for that expertise.
Of the bids, then, they would be doing the, posting the bids, getting who's going to bid, and then present that to the board?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. And then you will, as, the only thing that will be different, in the past, typically, you pick the general contractor, and, you know, and then at that point in time, the work is done. What they do is prepare the bids for maybe, they, they may bring you a grading bid proposal, you know, where they've collected all the bids for anyone that's interested in the grade work in these projects. And then you will select, you know, from that list, from that group. So they handle all the bidding, and then they bring it to you, so there's still an approval process that you're, you know, that you're most definitely involved in.
That's what I see the beauty in this project manager versus a general contractor. A general contractor, we would be bringing two bids before the board, one for the stadium and one for the band room and classrooms. This way, we will have several bids, and hopefully, I've talked with Mr. Kane, that there'll be a lot of interest in our local contractors and local workforce here in our community that will have the opportunity to bid these jobs, and hopefully, be part of this project, and hopefully, you know, create some job opportunities for our local folks.
I mean, that's the good thing to me, you know, when you think about the bid process, if we went the traditional way, there may be three different prices, and they've each had their own, you know, person that's bid on the grade work. Well, you may end up selecting contractor A, but contractor B may have had the lowest grading cost. Well, you've lost that money because the overall dollar was cheaper over here. So this gives you a chance to, to pick and choose among those, so. There's a real opportunity for savings there, and, you know.
When you get into the project, which is really at $400,000, I know in, at the TA Duggar, they had to have a change order, remember? And so we can pretty well depend on, this is going to be the price, and we're not going to change from this price to a higher price.
If, if you notice in the document, it refers to a maximum amount, not to exceed. And once the final scope of the project is completed, you all will know that number, and then basically, that's the number that everyone's in agreement that we're working from. So, the, the other beauty about their proposal to you is that they're basing all of this being completed in a 10-month cycle. And at the end of that 10 months, they've locked in their, their general condition cost, the cost of just the everyday operation of the project while they're on site. So if for some reason that goes over, they're not charging us any additional money for being there. So, so that's the other opportunity for savings there.
Well, evidently, I would think that they, the money allotted, as we, everybody knows, from the council, and the stadium was 3.5.
Yes, ma'am, and 1.5.
And band room, 1.5, 3, 4, 5, 1.5, and so evidently, that's, they feel they can complete that job with that amount of money.
Well.
They're not going to start it and say, oh, no, we're going to be short some money.
No, not exactly. The, what I would tell you is that what we agreed with the city was, that would be exactly how we split up the $5 million that they provided to us. To do a stadium that everyone's going to be proud of, and a band room that everyone's going to be proud of, we're going to have to seek additional funding from donors, and that's what we're in the process of doing.
Additional funding from what?
From donors.
Donors, oh, yeah, okay.
Yes, donations.
Well, you, you just don't want them to not complete a project, and they don't want to do that.
Well, I can, yeah, I can assure you that we won't start the project until we've secured the funding. Well, I can, yeah, I can assure you that we won't start the project until we've secured the funding.
I noticed that they are, it looks like they're going to be very good in that they will be reporting back to, I guess, you and to the board. And so, would you say that the board, or myself, I get a copy, for instance, like the, one of them is the bunny stint during that time or, well, there's all kinds of reports.
Right. Yeah, I, I think, Ms. Perkins, correct me if I'm wrong, when we've done projects in the past, the pay orders, are they included in the, the next month's board packet?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I know that we will also periodically, on a fairly regular basis, probably, you know, it'll, it'll vary depending on which phase of the project we're in. But maybe every week, every two weeks, we'll have progress meetings. They'll provide information from that. We can certainly gather that information and share that with you, you know, as well. And I'm sure that myself, maybe GRC, maybe Mr. Weems, whomever, will be giving you updates on a monthly basis. So we're.
Well, when it boils down to who's responsible for spending all the money at your board. So you want to know where your money's being spent. Seems like I have another question. I've read this really good. I have not read an A1A contract and I couldn't tell you that one. Okay, if, if I could get those reports along with, to keep up with it. Oh, they, they're only going to do the two projects, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this 398, et cetera, will do, just cover the band and the stadium.
Right. And again, that's all based on a percentage, based on that final, that maximum amount not to exceed in there. So that $300 and some thousand dollars you see in there, that's based on what that maximum amount not to exceed will be.
Will they, have they already decided when they will let bids for construction?
No, Mr. Weems says he needs about another 30 to 60 days to finish his part and Mr. O'Hare's part. So we're, we, we lost some time, you know, here the last few months, but we're, we're moving forward and, and they're, they're ramping back up their preparations as well. So hopefully what, in talking with Mr. Weems and with GRC, if, if you select them, it looks as though we would work on the parking lot in the back first, probably start there in June, the parking lot between the baseball and softball field because we have to have a place when school starts for the students to park. So that would be the first phase and then we would look at maybe breaking ground in, on the stadium maybe in July and then starting on the bandroom in September. Because the construction phase for the, the bandroom classroom addition will be shorter than the stadium. So that, preliminarily, that's, that's the thought process on how that will kind of unfold.
But you said it would take the softball field apart?
Oh, no, 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 ma'am. There's an area at the high school, at the high school, there's an area between the softball field and the baseball field and the track. There's a rectangular area. That will be the new parking lot. It's a unused space at this point, so.
We talked about this at the committee meeting, that they showed us all those maps and things and so this is all stuff we've heard before.
And we'll get about.
Where we're going to put everything.
I want to say it's a little over 300.
Yeah, you were, you were at all of them.
Oh, that one.
The committee meeting.
Yeah, I think that it will gain about three, I think it will hold about 300, 320 parking spaces, the new, the new parking lot.
I'll have more, you know I will.
And we'll do our best to answer them.
Yep. May I ask, have more questions?
No, may I have more coverage?
All right. I have been looking forward to doing this for a long time. Item on the floor is approved, approved selection of GRC as the construction manager for the new athletic complex and band and music classroom addition at Elizabethan High School for a cost of $398,340. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approved first reading of board policy 1.301, executive committee as proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some of.
Give a second. Ms. Armstrong, I think this was yours from the last meeting?
Right, yeah. I, I assume that number eight, item number eight, to make recommendations concerning possible board actions. Was that one added by TSBA?
Yeah, I think you wanted that, this is kind of.
I thought I had left it with advise because of the attorney in Nashville, but it's same thing, I think. We'll leave it as is, okay?
So you don't want to make any changes?
No, no, we won't make change. It won't make that much difference if you make a change.
Okay.
Ms. Armstrong, as Ms. Booer suggested, in your board packet, in your for information only section, that was the backup from the request that Mr. Isaacs has made to have our attorneys review that and submit these choices to you. So that is the wording that our attorneys propose based on your formal request to Mr. Isaacs for them to review it.
If she wants to leave it the same, I can withdraw my motion.
It's fine, it's fine, it comes out.
You can leave it. Are you okay with that, Mr. Isaacs? I said if, if she doesn't want to change it, I don't mind to withdraw my motion, I just.
So leave our current policy.
That's what I heard you to say, you want to leave it the way it is?
Yes, let's leave it, recommend, advise.
Okay.
No, it's not a difference.
Are you saying, Ms. Armstrong, that you want to leave the wording the way that it is proposed? Or are you saying that you, you don't want this considered at all tonight as a motion?
I don't think it's going to make that much difference, really, when I think through it. But why don't we leave it as proposed? And then if the board won't change it, it's fine with me.
No, ma'am, that's not my question. My question to you is, do you want to vote on this change as it is proposed? Or are you suggesting that we not consider it? Or are you suggesting that you make an amendment to Dr. May's motion to use the wording that you wanted initially? So you have three choices.
Please don't make me go through that one again. Let's just vote like it's, like it's proposed, okay?
That's the motion that's on the floor.
That makes it easy.
Okay.
All right, call for a vote then. That's fine, we can call for a vote, I'll leave my motion.
Item on the floor is approved first reading of board policy 1.301, executive committee as proposed. Ms. Perkins, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yeah, why? Oh, you want me to vote? Here I am reading on the next one, aye.
Uh, you're voting on the motion that's on the floor right now? Which is the wording that is proposed. So are you voting for that or against that?
I'm going to leave it as is.
As is and is Dr. May's motion, so you're voting for this? Is that a yea or a nay?
If you want it for the old, you'll vote no. If you want to change it, you'll vote yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Baker? Mr. Isaacs?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Booer?
No. Okay. I'm not sure exactly what happened, but, okay.
The motion carried.
Motion carried. So it now will say, it's going to have the change on the policy?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Do we still not have maintenance, policy maintenance with TSBA?
That contract will come up for consideration of later date, so that'll be up to the board to vote on it at that time. Our, we are currently in, we have several months left on this current contract.
Are you ready to move on? Okay. Next item is approved first reading of board policy 2.805, purchasing as proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
Allo.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I see.
And Ms. Armstrong, this was yours as well.
Yeah, I, it comes, same thing, it's just a little more clarity if you add afterbuildings, including remodeling projects. But that's actually an understood thing if you rebuildings. So probably the remodeling projects, it just makes it more clear. So that's why I had added that. I thought it would be more helpful.
So you want in line, in line 17, afterbuildings, you want it to include remodeling projects? So you want the board to vote on every remodeling project?
Sure.
Even bathrooms?
Building, comma, remod, include.
Well, I will tell you, I called a, some other board chairs to ask them about that. And basically, they said that unless there were things that need to be bid on, which would come before us, that they would probably never even know it happened. So that if something within a, you know, maintenance budget could carry it, didn't have to be bid, that was something most boards don't do because a remodel could be, everybody might have different indicators. I know that Mr. Van Huss was naming all these things that happen at the schools and most of the time we, little things we don't know about. So I think you have to be careful. I think what, I'm always hesitant to tinker with policy because it's written by people who look at it from, they take the law and then they write it so that it kind of covers things. And then I think when we start tinkering with it, sometimes it has unexpected, or maybe we didn't expect it to mean the things it did. So I don't know, it's, it always makes me nervous when we talk about things, when we add it in there for our clarification because I think on remodel, your version of what remodel is may be different than what my.
Well, you don't have to vote for it.
Uh, that's right.
You leave it as is and it'll be fine.
I would like to see this.
Most of the policies are written by school boards, by the way, rather than.
I, I would like to see it because that way you know what is being spent on these, exactly what's been spent ahead of time. But maybe these funds can be used for something else that needs to be done as opposed to remodeling. And like I said, especially, we have a number of things that needs to be done in a number of the schools. So maybe the money that's going to be spent for remodeling can be spent in one of our five schools. So yes, I would like to have this information.
Well, I was just trying to be helpful and make it more clear. I don't know what you'd call that project they're working, working on at Harold McCormick right now. I don't know if that's remodeling, if that's rebuilding or where they're converting the workroom into a classroom? A conversion?
I think it just kind of, it depends on boards. I know most boards see themselves more in big picture, less day-to-day. And I think that's one of the things we have to remember. We are big picture, these folks take care of day-to-day. And I think that's sometimes where there's not always a, a, we have a disconnect on this board about that because, you know, it's kind of, and I appreciate the fact that you guys want to be more involved in the day-to-day, but that really steps outside of what our role is.
I, I don't consider it day-to-day when we're spending funds to do the remodeling or additions or whatever. I do not consider that because we're still spending money.
Do we not have a dollar figure at which it's set?
Yes, we do.
What is that dollar figure? Can you tell me, what's the dollar figure at which we're to approve purchases over $10,000? And what's our total budget revenue line? How much revenue do we go through in a year? $23 million and now we're going to approve light bulbs? And, I mean, a remodel could be loosely defined under these new policies. At least the wording that you've put in here, it's, it includes, remodeling could be if you change a light fixture, or one that's broken and you have to repair it. I, I, I think it's broad.
Okay, I'm.
Well, let's change remodeling to another word.
Okay, I don't consider, I'm talking about, say, even this, this room that we're in presently. It was quite a bit more than $10,000 to remodel. And there's several other things, not just, you know, right here in this room, but there's other areas. And as I stated, I feel some of those funds should have been spent in our schools. So you, you might want to emphasize not changing the light bulb or something like that. But when you have some major remodeling things, I think we need to look at.
Ms. Baker, what would we have done when we were recognizing all these children and teams and things of this nature? Could, we couldn't do it in the old boardroom. I think it, and also this, the building of this was controlled by Mr. Trent who took individual, individuals in who did, did work. We had prisoner labor and things of this nature. And it came in under budget $100,000. So out of, it was, it was $125,000 was the estimate to begin with and it, we spent $25,000 and that includes a $10,000 unit out here, heating and cooling unit. So we wouldn't have had this today.
It's just not this, but I still think it should have been bought before the, for any type of major remodeling. Because this is a historical building also.
Well, one of the things we have to remember with this building, this building actually involves the entire school system because the folks that work in this building work for every school, every child. And what they do here is very important, turning our old boardroom, which was unused space, into three classrooms, I mean, three offices for Mr. Pless, Ms. Hannah Wilson and for Marsha Taylor. Those folks do great work for us, they need a place to work. And so in the last few years, this building has become a, a central office that is incredibly helpful to our school system, not just a school. So while I know that sometimes it's hard to say we're spending money here, this does benefit the entire system. And again, this is a matter of, you know, it's.
Let's table this particular item. That's fine.
To do what with it?
How about that?
But what are we going to table it for? Like, what are you wanting to do with it?
Well, look at some divorces for every mom. And I still don't know the cost of changing that, that area to those three offices, which is fine.
You can guess that it was under the bid amount. And you know what I would like, what I would just like to recommend to this board? Just once, when they do something, like Mr. Trent manages his budget so well and he has people that have the skills to do what they do and it doesn't cost us any extra money. Comes out of his, I would like for us to, just once, to go, "Mr. Trent, great job. Your staff, great job, thank you for doing something. You took unused space and you turned it into something fantastic." I'm doing that now. "Mr. Trent, thank you for managing your budget and for using the, your people to do amazing things." I feel like sometimes you probably feel like we don't appreciate you. And I want you to know, this room, everything you do, we do.
It's not saying that we don't appreciate what he does, but it's saying that you're keeping up with your dollars. And that's part, that's part of the board's responsibility is to keep abreast of the money that's being spent.
And if you'll remember, in our audits, they're clean. Ms. Wilson makes sure that you know what's being spent, but we don't have to do, we don't micromanage and spending, how they spend under $10,000 is, falls under that. That is, that's Mr. Trent's responsibility, that's his part of his budget, it's not ours. And while we are oversight, how he spends under $10,000 is each manager's responsibility.
Well, that's good too, but I'm still asking, what did it cost to change those rooms? I don't believe it was under 10, but it'd be nice if it was.
The labor was completed by Luther Perkins, who is a maintenance person, who has the skills, the carpentry skills to do that. And I think, Ms. Trent, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we're talking about sheet rock and, and of course the wood separators for the wall and things of this nature and the electrical and tile. So under those circumstances, labor is always at least half of everything that's been done, so.
My understanding was it was under 10. And then you had a second issue where it needed the heat and air for the whole building, not the same project, but it was, it helped this room, but didn't help the bill, the building had to have it replaced, but it wasn't just because of this room. And my understanding was this room was completed under 10, but I may be wrong on that. I didn't, I didn't look at, that was before my days.
She's referring to the former boardroom that was converted into four offices, not three.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was four.
I thought you were.
Oh, wonderful.
But like I said, we, we didn't, I didn't see.
My issue's not with this room or that room or anything else. My issue's with, we have a $10,000 limit. I don't want to be, you know, our, our meetings go long and we discuss and that's good. We debate. good. We debate things and we sit down and have a, a discussion that allows us to think through items. And we should do that about major financial issues, whether it be a remodel project, a capital project, uh, anything else. We need to have, uh, um, healthy debates so that we can see all sides of an issue. But I don't want to be doing it on things that are just routine maintenance that are small because I fear that we will hold the school system hostage for projects that need to be done, like for instance, just by way of example, the wording that's proposed, we will be, if a toilet breaks and it's going to require a purchase of another commode and a plumber to come in and fix it, and it's going to cost seven hundred dollars, we'll now wait for a called meeting, which must be either a special meeting, an open me, I know that's not what the intent is, but that's what the wording says. And so, that's my issue is it's, the wording currently as worded in the rec, in the proposed, um, thing that we're voting on says that all remodel. And that's my issue. And that's, I think, what you were saying at the beginning is when you tinker with policy where attorneys kind of watch for those things, then you, you actually set yourself up for failing against your own policy, which once approved by this board have the rule of law. And that's why I'm questioning the way it's written.
All right. Well, we, we can table it and look at it and say ten thousand bucks. Like I said, you, and you're not supposed to do like ten thousand this time, then ten thousand going into the same project.
My question is, the, the question before us right now is if we vote no on the motion, then we stand with our current policy as written? And if we vote yes, we're agreeing to the wording of the special purchase, is that correct? I'd say we go ahead and vote on the motion.
I'd like to table it. And if we care to remodel it.
So, Mr. Isaacs, are you calling for the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Isaacs?
The, the question is...
No, 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 I'm just figuring out what we're voting on. Are we voting to table or are we voting on the item?
It wasn't the most laid to date.
So, we are voting on it. Okay, got it.
If you're calling the question, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a, a, call for the question in a second. So, approved first reading of board policy 2.805, purchasing as proposed. Ms. Perkins, would you call roll?
Mrs. Armstrong?
Are we voting to table?
No.
No, ma'am. You're voting on the motion that's on the floor, which was your changes that you're proposing.
No.
You're voting no?
Yes.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Isaacs?
No.
Dr. May?
No.
Ms. Brewer?
No. Okay.
Motion carrying.
I would tell the board to be sure and look at that all purchases and the special purchases shall require specific prior board approval on an item-by-item basis. So, I don't know about that one, but you need to follow that law.
Last item is approve on first reading board policy 5.117, procedure for granting tenure as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Now, who did the correcting on this one?
Well, this is time-sensitive and it changes, uh, Mr. Van Huster's here, this changes, uh, gets us up to date with the law.
And I'll go, I'll go through each change with you and tell you where each portion came from. Um, on lines one and two, it says the Board of Education will grant tenure only those teachers who, when it starts with meet, that's the change, meet the statutory requirements for the award of tenure and who have a record of excellence in teaching. That was not, uh, that's, that is in reference to the new law. Ms. Owen, uh, provided that wording for us. If you notice, there's a new, the superscript one there is referencing the new tenure law, okay? If you go down to line number eight, line eight, um, we have proposed changing the word must to may. It's not required by law that we provide all these things or have all these things, and therefore, we're requesting a change to may. Sometimes these things are important, sometimes they're not. And so, we're just trying to streamline that process. In line fifteen, the, there was a, it was changed by law from three years to five years, so that's, that's a law change. On line twenty-five, the June fifteenth date is also a change by law. On line twenty-eight, number four there, teachers who earn tenure will be honored. We just changed that to recognized. It sounded a little more, you know, honored, kind of maybe implies they're getting a plaque or, you know, something. So, we just felt like honored was probably a better, or excuse me, recognized was a better, better term there. And then the last change is on line thirty-seven, and again, that was a change by law. And previously, someone that left our system with tenure and came back, they would serve a one-year probationary period, and then the board could grant them tenure back. That law has changed it. Now, they have to be on a two-year probationary period. So, that's, that's the, that's every change in the policy.
Now, since we have TSBA maintenance and we're paid for that, why are we not using TSBA to do these changes? They used to all the time and they didn't cost us anything. See, this is going to cost the board by using an attorney.
If the board directs me not to use them for board policies, I won't do that any longer. But until the board directs me not to do that, then I will continue that because that's what we've done.
Well, we used to not. I mean, I don't know, we ain't changed, but, uh, TSBA did all the changing and we didn't have to pay anything.
If the board chooses for us not to use them, then we certainly won't. So, that's, that's not a problem for me at all, so.
Mrs. Armstrong, just as a notation, always in the past, when our administrative team has proposed changes on policies, they will either refer them for suggestions to TSBA if we have questions, but also, TSBA will tell you or any of our administrative team that makes that call that they will give us broad answers, but it is up to the local education agency to customize those policies for us. And in the past, when we have had questions about that, regardless of who the attorney of record is for the school system, we have utilized our attorneys to review the policy to make sure that we are in compliance with the law and, as Mr. Van Huster said, to make sure that the wording is what it actually should be.
My understanding that this, uh, tenure policy was recommended by TSBA originally to all boards. There was an email that we all got.
That's correct.
The TSB update saying, um, these are the following legislative changes for the next year, and one of them was that the tenure laws changed. And it said to look at your policies, make sure that they reflect it, and it directed us to their site. This was one that was on the radar. There's others. There's a few others. I don't remember what they were right now, but there were several legislative changes. Um, and this one was forty-nine dash five dash five oh three is the new law that requires that, um, they have the record of excellence. They define the record of excellence, actually, which isn't in the policy.
You're, you're correct in your recollection. And when we took that into consideration, what they were doing, then the administrative team looked at that and reviewed it and proposed the small changes that were our choices to customizing it for our school system as opposed to a, just a broad, um, reading, as you might say, uh, that, we felt it would be more appropriate for us to use these particular wording changes. But then, when we did that, we submitted it to our attorneys, and it was reviewed again to make sure that we are using policies that are in compliance with the law.
We had another one last year that we changed from May fifteen to June fifteen because of this same law. If you remember, that was one that was also, we had not changed it before the date. And then when we recognized it, we voted to suspend the policy so that we could fix our, our error that we were not in compliance. Um, but it's because the legislative cycle changes. Um, I will say too, that anytime I look at a tenure issue, um, on a policy level, it makes me nervous. You said it made you nervous on the others. This is one of the most powerful aspects of the board and affects so many of our dedicated teachers that we have to be very, very careful what we put in a policy on this. I would definitely want an attorney's input to know that we're compliant and not tying the board's hands to prevent, you know, granting tenure to the teachers who create the system. Um, and I like the changing must to may, that allows us to, uh, have someone who, say, may have had a, um, problem with, say, attendance because they were ill, but still be granted tenure because we took that into consideration. If it says must and their attendance was poor, one out of five years because they were having breast cancer, say, they dealt with, we could actually recognize that and acknowledge it. So, I like the change that you made in, in section, in line eight, um, as long as we're discussing it. And then the other was the, uh, recognized. I don't think that's a major difference, but honored sounds like we're somehow higher than them. And I think recognized is more an appropriate thing that simply just says, you know, we want to recognize their achievements. So, I don't think that's a bad change either, um, in, in general, in favor of the way it's written.
Maybe tomorrow, I would, one day next week, could you call the TSBA and talk with Mr. Green and see why they aren't doing what they...
Well, what he, what Dr. May had referred to, Ms. Armstrong, uh, uh, he was, Mr. Green was involved, uh, at that point in time with sending out that information. So, he's, he has sent us what they have recommended. What we did was take their recommendation and the administrative team customized it for Elizabethan City Schools. We then turned around and submitted it to our attorneys to review, and they made a couple suggestions to tweak it a little bit more appropriately and make it legally read better. And that's the policy that you have proposed in front of you.
And I think TSBA's was identical with the exception of the word may and must and the, uh, word honored and recognized. Otherwise, it was the same as what we have written. That's why I meant those words. TSBA gave us the wording, and our attorney took fifteen minutes to read over it and say, "Yep, this is good." And then as they were reading it, I, this, I'm filling in the blanks here, tell me if I'm wrong, but as they read it, probably said, "You know, this sounds a little better," and that, that ties your hands when you say must. And I, I liked that our attorney said, "Take out must and make it may." May, uh, there's a difference between, you know, should and, or, and, uh, can, shall or, or may, you know? Shall means you've got to do it, and must means you've got to do it. But may says that, so I like that name, it's a good name. May says that you can, uh, think through things and, and, and use your judgment if that's a reason to give tenure.
I feel Ms. Armstrong was saying that we've called before about the changes, and they will reword it or you run the word. So, she's just saying save a few pennies.
Sure.
Our, our attorney fees are pretty high this month. And use them, you know, to critiques, not saying, not to make these changes, but I do have one other question too. Did we change line one and two, or is that the changes they made? Where it says meet the statutory requirements for the award of tenure?
Yeah. Yeah. I told you that the state has, has changed the law, and so there's a reference to the law that wasn't there before, and then that this wording was suggested by Ms. Owen.
Okay, but originally it came from TSBA in this manner?
That, that exact wording...
Without the red wording.
Um, I, I don't have the state one in front of me, so I don't want to speak as to exactly what the TSBA version had, but we took our original and the TSBA version, sent those to Ms. Owen, and she suggested these other things.
Okay, I believe the original wording is where we have the line drawn through it.
That's the original to our policy.
Yeah.
I'm not, I can't speak as that's the original...
That was two thousand and ten.
To the update that TSBA is, is recommending. I, I, I can't say that.
Okay. But I, I know, usually when you call, they will give wording just like our attorney, but the only thing is, we don't have to, you know, pay a fee for that. That's all, that's what she was suggesting.
And I, and I, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. I guess, I just need direction from the board if you don't want me to talk to, or anyone on the administration, to talk to Mr. Owen, Ms. Owen and Mr. Shields about board policies.
Well, we weren't saying that. We were just suggesting to save us some money and not saying not to.
Carry on.
But I'm, we were just saying that this is a free thing and our attorneys are, are there for, you know, where we pay the fee. So, but it's...
I was under the impression, usually those attorneys, what they did is they went to TSBA and then...
They, they're in constant communication with them. They are.
I thought we had saved so much.
And that way, we could cut that middleman out.
I think, well, I, I feel like I'm being chastised a little bit, so I guess I need to apologize to the board for using our attorneys to get some information on this policy. So, I apologize.
It wasn't intended that way. It's just that I think the bill this month for our attorneys is what?
I think our bill, it's twelve hundred and seventy...
Fifty-eight dollars.
Twelve fifty-eight, but I think we've actually done a lot better since we went with a piecemeal.
So...
Let's just go ahead and vote. I'll call for the vote.